Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our February 16th, 2021 Board of Commissioner meeting. First thing we would like to do is stand and do the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic through which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, everyone. We will move on to our agenda review.
Motion to approve.
Second. I got a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Any changes?
Any changes. He never raises his hand.
We're just zooming through here.
All right. I got a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Stephanie, you would do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner People.
Aye.
Commissioner Landkammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stuenberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our first item on our agenda is some drainage projects we were working on. I got Craig Austinson and Ryan Hinnicker, I believe, reporting in to us.
Good morning. This is Ryan.
Good morning, Ryan.
Good morning.
Everyone, I'll start off. I will be discussing the CD 57 petition for partial abandonment. It's an official hearing, so I don't know if we have to do a call over or how do you want to handle that or not.
We will. Why don't you give us a jurisdictional documents and I'll open up the public hearing.
Okay.
Do we have a public hearing?
Yep.
Okay.
You have public comment.
So jurisdictional documents for this hearing. Notices were mailed out to landowners on February 4th of 2021. We did also put a publication for affidavit and made them a free press in that three separate dates, including January 25th, February 8th, and February 15th. I have a small little memo to discuss the purpose of today's hearing. A petition for partial abandonment for a portion of County Ditch 57 public drainage system has been received by our property environmental resources department staff. This petition only affects one landowner. The abandonment is in the best interest of the County Ditch 57 drainage system and as the area abandonment no longer serves as a benefit to the system. I have a brief description that I'll read of this area of partial abandonment. The area for partial abandonment is hereby described. Portions of County Ditch 57 main original concrete tile line, including 30 and 36-inch tile lying in the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter, lying north and west of the current open ditch. This includes 250 feet of 36-inch concrete original main tile line, lying east and south of the current open ditch. Starting at the point on the east side of the current open ditch, lying in the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of the northwest quarter, all lined in section four of Mapleton Township, Blue Earth County, Minnesota. My requested action by the drainage authority today is to approve said findings in order for the petition for partial abandonment for portions of County Ditch 57. That's all I got.
All right. Thank you very much, Ryan. And if anyone on the phone or calling in or on the Zoom meeting, I would ask you that if you intend to speak, try to unmute your phone or make sure your phone is unmuted and give us a second to make sure you're unmuted at this end, and then introduce yourself with your name and address before speaking. So at this time, if there's anyone that would like to comment on County Ditch 57 hearing for partial abandonment, we will open the public hearing comment portion. This hearing is being recorded, so again, state your name and address, and then please keep your comments to three minutes per person. Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 57 abandonment? Anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 57? One last time, anyone wishing to comment on County Ditch 57? Hearing no public comment, and we will bring it back to the board for further action. Any questions or comments from the board? Pretty straightforward. We heard about it briefly at a work session or somewhere along the line here, so.
Mr. Chair, I would move to accept the findings in order as such, and petition for partial abandonment of County Ditch 57 be approved.
All right. Thank you. Second, motion. Stuenberg, second. Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. Roll call, please, Stephanie.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner People.
Aye.
Commissioner Landkammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stuenberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye.
Motion carries. That will conclude our County Ditch 57 public hearing and action. So thank you, Craig and Ryan, for your attendance in the meeting today and the help getting that done.
We have one more.
Yep, yep. Negative ditch, yep. Negative ditch balances, yep.
Yes. Okay. Every year, the board advances funds from the capital fund to cover ditch counts with a deficit cash balance. The resolution also sets the interest for the deficit funds. The requested action today is that we ask the board to hereby move to advance funds from the capital fund to cover deficit cash balances for the individual ditch funds plus interest as shown in the attached proposed resolution.
All right. Those are in our packet. It's a routine adjustment we do every year, so.
Pap moves.
Got a motion to approve the resolution. I got a first and a second from Vance, second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Stephanie, you do the roll, please.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner People.
Aye.
Commissioner Landkammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Stuenberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. That looks like that's all I have on my list from you guys today, so thank you for your help. Have a good day.
Thank you.
All right. We'll move on to item number four, planning and zoning. Mr. George Leary from Landuse Administration.
Morning, George.
Hi.
I think we're ready, George. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a discussion from the January 6th and February 3rd, 2021 virtual meetings of the Blue Earth County Planning Commission. Item PC 02-21 is a request from Rick and Angela DiMartini. It is for review and approval of an interim use permit application to operate a dog kennel. The proposed kennel will accommodate up to 12 adult dogs and will on occasion offer letters of puppies for sale. The property is owned agricultural and is located in the southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of Section 20 De Coria Township. Staff presented the full report to the Planning Commission at the January meeting. Following the report, public comment period, and discussion by the commission, the request is tabled. The discussion continued at the February 3rd meeting. The Planning Commission chairman reopened the discussion to allow additional public comment, but limited individuals to five minutes. The attorney representing the applicants provided the following comments and opinions. The main objection of the neighbors has been issues with noise. The increased setback distance that will be provided by the proposed location compared to the existing structure, an addition of trees, and the installation of sound blocking measures will reduce the noise. Noise is a fact of life and should be expected. Barking dogs are normal in the rural area. And lastly, a significant number of the complaints have involved noise and not trespassing dogs. The attorney provided additional comment on the issue of noise. He stated that kennels will create noise and rhetorically asked how it can be addressed. Five neighboring property owners provided the following comments. If bark collars were worn by the dogs and barking was controlled, the proposal may not be a problem. The applicants are unable to control barking and is doubtful it can be controlled. The dogs continue to trespass onto neighboring properties. Traffic on township road has increased due to kennel activities. Neighboring property values will decrease with the presence of a kennel. And lastly, the applicant should find another place for the kennel. The Planning Commission moved to review the 15 required standards for approval of an interim use permit. Of the 15 standards, the Planning Commission unanimously agreed with the 11 of the staff prepared supportive findings. The Planning Commission agreed with a 12th staff prepared supportive finding by a vote of four in favor to one opposed. The Planning Commission had issues with findings provided by staff for the remaining three of 15 standards. Standard number 10, that interim use will not be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted. The staff prepared finding stated the following. The proposed kennel will be approximately 600 feet from two homes to the east. The proposed kennel will exceed the required 500-foot setback to residences other than the applicants. In addition, the noise control and proposed screening included in the submitted business plan should reduce the impact on neighboring properties. Therefore, the approval of an interim use permit for a kennel appears unlikely to be injurious to the use and enjoyment of property in its immediate vicinity for purposes already permitted. Following the discussion by the Planning Commission, the staff prepared finding was rejected by a roll call vote of four to one. Concerns expressed by the Planning Commission included trespassing and barking dogs and lack of desire shown by the applicants to control these issues. A supportive comment for the finding stated that if barking and trespassing issues were controlled, the proposal may not be opposed by neighboring property owners. An alternative finding prepared by staff was proposed to the Planning Commission, and it stated, "Following the denial of the Board of Adjustment of an after-the-fact variance to reduce a property line setback and the setback to two neighboring residences, additional photos and video footage have been provided to county staff and to the county planning commission showing dogs continuing to trespass onto neighboring property and continuing to be easily heard barking from neighboring property. These actions show an unwillingness on the part of the applicants to take these matters seriously and keep dogs under control, and a lack of regard for the neighboring property owners. The inability or unwillingness to control barking and trespassing dogs will likely continue to impact neighboring residents. Therefore, approval of the interim use permit would likely be injurious to the use and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted." Following the discussion by the Planning Commission, the staff prepared alternative unsupportive finding was accepted by a roll call vote of four to one. Standard number 12, that adequate measures have been or will be taken to prevent or control offensive odor, fumes, dust, noise, and vibration, so that none of these will constitute a nuisance, and to control lighted signs and other lights in such a manner that no disturbance to neighboring properties will result. The staff prepared finding stated the following. The proposed kennel will be approximately 600 feet from two homes to the east. The proposed kennel will exceed the required 500-foot setback to residences other than the applicants. In addition, the noise control and proposed screening included in the submitted business plan should reduce the impact on neighboring properties. Furthermore, with adherence to the required performance standards of the ordinance, the proposed use is unlikely to create a nuisance for neighboring properties. Following a discussion by the Planning Commission, the staff prepared finding was rejected by a roll call vote of four to one. Concerns expressed by the Planning Commission included the history of the property, testimony of the neighbors regarding noise and trespassing dogs. Reference was also made to the plan submitted by the applicants indicating the use of bark collars, that these devices are not being used. An alternative finding was proposed to the Planning Commission. Following the denial by the Board of Adjustment and after-the-fact variance to reduce property line setback and the setback to two neighboring residences, the applicants have not taken the necessary measures to contain their dogs or to control offensive noise from barking dogs. In addition, there is an additional dust from vehicles accessing the property from the township road with no attempts at dust control. Following a discussion by the Planning Commission, the staff prepared unsupportive finding was accepted by a roll call vote of four to one. Standard number 15, that site-specific conditions and other such conditions are established as required for the protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare. The staff prepared finding stated the following. The protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare have been addressed through the required performance standards for this type of interim use and in the conditions included below. Prior to discussing and voting on the finding, the Planning Commission reviewed the conditions prepared by staff. Following a discussion by the Planning Commission, the staff prepared finding was rejected by a roll call vote of four to one. Concerns expressed by the Planning Commission included trespassing and barking dogs and a lack of desire shown by the applicants to control these issues, and the continuation of kennel activities following denial of a setback variance. Support for the finding suggested the request should be reviewed as a standalone item. The addition of stronger, more enforceable conditions of approval was suggested by three of the Planning Commission members. Following the discussion by the Planning Commission, the staff prepared supportive finding was rejected by a roll call vote of four to one. An alternative finding was proposed by a Planning Commission member to insert the word "not" into the following finding. The protection of the public's health, safety, morals, and general welfare have not been addressed through the required performance standards for this type of interim use and in the conditions included below. The commission had voted to accept the alternative's unsupportive finding by a vote of four to one. The Planning Commission continued their discussion on conditions. Ultimately, the Planning Commission asked staff to continue working on strict enforceable conditions. The Planning Commission acknowledged that they are an advisory board to the county board and that their recommendation could be overturned. Following the discussion, a motion was made and seconded recommending denial of the request to the county board. By a roll call vote, the motion carried by a vote of four to one. In summary, the Planning Commission, I'm sorry. In summary, the planning and zoning staff recommends approval of the request with supportive findings for the 15 required standards. The Planning Commission agreed on 12 of the standards by a majority vote. Supportive findings presented by staff for items 10, 12, and 15 were rejected, also by majority votes. Alternative non-supportive findings were discussed and, following a roll call vote, were accepted by the Planning Commission. Conditions for approval of the request are provided, and the board action is a resolution.
Thank you, George, for that report. At this time, we will open up our public comment portion of our meeting, and then we will discuss the staff's work that they did on this with the extra conditions that were added for some options that we have. So at this time, I will open it up for public comment. Anyone that would like to comment on the PC 02-21, please state your name and address for the record. I would ask you to keep your comments to five minutes or less, and if you are, most everybody's calling in, so make sure you're off mute and just clarify that we are hearing you so we can hear your testimony. So at this time, I will open up the public hearing for PC 02-21 for the dog kennel.
Thank you. This is Officer T. Allison Burrow, on behalf of Angela DiMartini. Can you guys hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
So my address is 121 Main Avenue Court, Attica, Minnesota, Box 5001. I'll keep my comments brief as the board requested. We are seeking for the board to approve my findings interim use permit to operate kennel. The biggest complaint that's been made and the biggest thing that the planning commission seemed to focus on was the noise. However, what they focused on was the noise at the current location, not the noise at actual proposed new site. The current location is a barn in the northeast section of the property, is only about 300 feet away to the neighboring residence compared to the 600 feet new location will be. The new location is going to be built from scratch. It would involve include fencing around the whole entire portion. There would be trees planted to help screen the noise as well. There's also going to be sound system for our collars, and one of the biggest things is going to be looking to be a garage door style installation on top of each of the outside kennel run, which can help, those can be closed to help reduce the noise that comes up and out. The board listed a business plan, there's a lot of neighbors being taken here to prevent noise from affecting neighbors' property. Now, the custody is all going to be included in one of the names that's not likely, but all steps are being taken to reduce the noise as far as possible. In addition, one of the other complaints is the dogs trespassing on the neighboring property. That's been addressed by the fenced-in kennel. It's going to be completely fenced in, 60 inches high. It's not really like the dogs can just jump over the fence until it's eight or nine yards back. So the concerns that the neighbors have brought forward have been addressed by this new location as far as possible. I mean, all steps are being taken to do this. Obviously, none of this has been done yet, which is kind of what seems to be the complaint because we need to choose from the county board who will move forward on taking these steps. So we are asking that the county approve the term use permit. The only objection that we have to the proposed condition is dust control. The neighbors are saying that there's a lot of excess traffic being used with kennels. At most, there's one or two customers every weekend. At most, it's more likely there's three to four additional cars a month being used with kennels. It's not like there's puppies that are just not being connected to be picked up, but there's no moving here, so the, you know, amount of increased traffic is so minimal that making my clients have to provide dust control is, I think, unreasonable because there's really no just so bad. I believe the one neighbor that had me committed new exposure of traffic for that, the people who live there, the UPS truck is not actually like the, you know, four or five customers a week. My clients live there, they have a lot of friends, seven of them, maybe seven of them would get home at one time without giving them. So the only thing that we would request is that the dust control not be included in the condition as it's on the, nothing further than that this time. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. We appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 02-21?
This is Mark Bobel. Can you hear me?
Yep.
All right. I am a neighbor to the property. I guess, I don't, the biggest issue I do have is with the noise, and the gentleman that was just speaking, he'd be happy to go deer hunting with you sometimes and listen to it all day long while we're deer hunting. That's just one. This is an interim use permit, and the proposed structure that I don't really expect that they built. The interim use permit that was declined in January, I thought this was a done deal then. This is just kicking the can down the road. There has been nothing done to, there's been nothing done. They've been continuing to operate the same manner that they have before. I feel like if they go ahead with this, it's just going to, you know, cement the behavior that they've already shown. They are incorrigible to their neighbors. They don't, they do not care about their neighbor's sanity, health, or issues. And you can see that with the email or text correspondence that has been going on. I've had personal issues, or my family has had issues with property lines just recently, and all it does is every time they do something, they have to prove that we're right and cost us hundreds, if not thousands, dollars. And all I just see is this is, this is going to be an issue that is going to go on in perpetuity because of the main reason I don't think they're going to get out of this interim use. I don't expect this new structure to be built. And if this does get built, maybe, maybe one of the issues that you did raise was the extra dust on the roads. That could be resolved very easily with an oil application. Other properties do that around there. If this does go that far, which I do hope it does not, maybe you could afford your neighbors a little bit of that, a little bit of sanity by putting some oil on the road and paying for it. But this shouldn't have gotten this far. And I would suggest they find another place for it because anybody who says, you know, dogs bark? Yeah, dogs bark. One or two here and there. When you've got 20 dogs barking from sunup to sundown, it gets very, very aggravating. And for the gentleman who said that dogs bark, why don't you go stand out there for a while or sit there all day and listen to the constant bark? It just does not stop. And that's all I have to say. Thank you very much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Mark, for those comments. We appreciate that. Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 02-21? Anyone else wishing to comment on PC 02-21 for the dog kennel? Again, anyone wishing, or I see something lighting up?
Can you hear me now?
We can hear you just a little bit.
Okay. I'm standing around the corner. It's been.
We can hear you a little better.
A little better?
That's, that's pretty good.
Are you sure? I can sit closer to the speaker?
That sounds good.
Okay. Thank you. Deborah Henry, 573-90, 174, one. I have a few things here. This is the first one. Okay. I'll hold that out. This is, what you just heard is what I woke up to her, was awakened yesterday morning. Yesterday. This is not all of the ordinary. I call it my normal and have for years now. I'm going to share my screen. I'm not going to talk about all this, but I just want you to see it while I am talking. I'm going to move it. According to the business plan, the dogs will be outside from 6:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. That's 14 hours a day. In the summer, there will be 12 adult dogs plus the three family dogs outside. We're going to have 10 briefing rooms with, so that's 10 litters twice a year, nine pups per litter on average, 90 dogs outside playing within a matter of time. There'll be overlapping, of course, the pups. The big area where the dogs are going to run outside, there's nothing over the top of that to cause any noise from that coming out of this layer or any other neighboring I got that information from the Bella's House of Gooch website and their Facebook page of how many times they breed, and it looks like they breed their dogs twice, all of them. They also will have puppies that are, they will also have more than 12 dogs at a time when they return one of their dogs from a program they call bargaining shift. They bring the dog home, they breed it, and then after they're done with the pups, they send it back to the guardianship home. So, they'll have 13 at times, or 14, depending upon how many guardianship dogs they bring back. The dogs they have won't go anywhere. Also, they'll have dogs that they can't sell, so those will still be there. And on occasion, I'm sure a dog comes back here and there. And, uh, how Gary said, a quote from Angela told us many years ago and still continues to tell us that that's just what dogs do, they bark. We have three dogs, two inside, one outside, they don't bark. They have been trained not to, you can train a dog not to bark. We have a concrete slab that is next to their barn, and after three years, it's still not complete because the contractor refuses to come back and finish it until the nuisance is resolved. And I can provide his name in prior, oh, true. The DiMartini's attorney said moving the dogs to a new area or structure on the property is not going to stop the bark, quote. These are all the pictures of noise, all videos. Here, this is going to be a file of pictures from 2016, concurrent today, we have a picture from today of the dogs advancing on to our property. We'll go backwards, so here's the ones just from this last, um, I know it says November, December, January, but these are all time and date stamped. These are all tracks of the dogs leaving over to our place and back to their place, them in our corn, them over here by our sheds, and this is them going back to their barns. Um, it was 659 pictures, 14 of them are from this month and the last 16 days. Uh, this showed a pattern that this is not just a noise issue, 90% of the, 90% of them are date and timestamp. 96% of the pictures showed off the no collars. Um, photos also of them in our buildings, in our garage, around the chicken coop, causing, harassing, causing and harassing the chickens, which actually causes the chick, chickens unnecessary here, causing them not to lay eggs. Chicken and, chickens and eggs are one of our food sources along with a very large garden. Pictures show the dogs in, and dog tracks moving from the garden to the barn. Others show the dog tracks in the snow moving back to the barn. They are affecting one or more food sources. You're supposed to preserve the health, safety, and welfare of all residents. I know, I'm nervous, I'm sorry.
Alright, thank you, Deb, you got, you're just a little over five minutes, um, you, what, got any final comments?
This is our, this is our life. We've been dealing with this for five years, please let me add just a little bit more. This is their dog on the other side of my dad's kennel list a couple of days ago, well, a week ago. So you can see, they are not to this day doing anything. And, um, I will jump to, um, I feel that this should not be a standalone permit. This is a permit that they requested back in November. It still is dealing with the same thing, it's been denied twice. This permit for an interim use, um, been, I'm getting confused, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm going to have George explain the interim use and the Board of Adjustments' decision in just a minute, so we'll deal with that in a second. You got any closing comments at this point, we're at about seven minutes?
Um, they just, they've been doing this for five years, they knowingly have been doing this for five years against the law. According to the Blue Earth County website, not having a permit is against the law. So they break all the laws for five years, we don't, and we get punished and they are, oh, here's a permit. I don't think that's fair, we do not want a kennel in this area. They have been, they've been breaking the law for several years and they know what needed to be, to be acted. And they knew what needed to be applied for since 2015. The police cannot monitor this, they have no restrictions here. Blue Earth County has not monitored this, nobody's been out here, it's always been a burden of our group. Um, last year, they had many litters of pups. Um, I will say that, um, the property value is going to go down, we all know that, I can't believe it, like common sense says that it is. My dad lives here, he's 73 years old in an elderly care home, his life is pretty miserable with all the dogs. And I'll end then with, um, you know that song, song that they paid paradise to put up a parking lot? Well, we thought we found our paradise when we bought this piece of property, but they paid paradise to put up a dog now.
Okay, thank you, Deborah. Any other comments regarding PC 27?
This, this is David Goble, uh, property owner, uh, to the north of town. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Alright, uh, first of all, that barking you just heard, uh, that sound, uh, I don't live around Manuketo, but I'm down there about two, three weekends a year, okay? And I hunt down there, and that barking you heard, it's constant, all day long, the whole time I'm there. Uh, that, that is one of the things. Um, the other thing is, is that, uh, when they were using the barn, and that's all fine and good, but then they tore a fence down, they built a fence for the runway dogs over our property. We spent a thousand dollars to get the pins relocated again where they needed to be. And found out that they had their fence all the way across our lawn. Um, plus that, they're running sewer down the hill, they filled up the wooded area with junk. And, and, uh, and I know they are talking about putting up a new facility. Well, to be very honest about it, I don't know how they can operate now if they were turned down, uh, interim use permit. It don't make sense to me, because whenever anything like that happens to me, I end up having to obey the law. And I have a big problem with that. And, uh, granted, I don't live down there, but I feel sorry for the neighbors. And as far as the dogs running, yes, they do run, and I know dogs can get out whenever, but, you know what? The majority of the time they're running, I haven't been on the phone, and I didn't have the opportunity to see the pictures. But, I bet you, I know exactly what they look like because I've seen them a few times going there. Now, as far as the dirt, yeah, that's one thing, you can put salt water on it and it'll take care of it. Uh, to me, that's not a big deal, but, the whole thing is, is if people have not obeyed the law for the last five years, what do you think is going to happen now? That's my thing. And you know what, all the neighbors suffered because of it. And, you know what, we ended up, uh, we had that place, there's 22 acres down there, we ran it out to park. Well, you know what, we quit doing that, so we didn't have to go through the property to disrupt everything, because the dogs were terrorizing everybody. So, anyway, that's all I have, uh, and my parting comment is, is if the interim use per, use permit was denied, how can they still be operating? That's my question. Thank you very much.
Thank you, David, for those comments, appreciate it. Anyone else wishing to comment at this time on 0221?
This is Attorney Taylor from Brawls again, I just wanted a quick comment that all of the complaints that have been made are about the current situation, not about that actual proposal, new proposed building studies. Um, and the goals, I don't think they listed where they live unless because they don't live in that area, actually, they hunt to the property to the north, there's not a home there. So, just wanted to point out that none of the complaints are actually about the new facility, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to comment on 0221, Rick and Angela DiMartini for the dog kennel?
Yes, can you hear me, this is Mark Goble.
Yep, Mark, we can hear you.
Just like to respond to that last comment, just because we don't live in the area, it doesn't mean we don't own the land around it that will decline in value. I do have family that lives in the area, and they experience it every day. And unfortunately, none of them can be on the phone, because we happen to work at 9:00, 5:00 in the morning. We have other jobs to obtain for all this stuff that's depreciating in value. And all we can go off of, we, we can't see in the future, you're talking about a proposal that, one, I don't think will ever get built. But, two, the only thing we can go off is past performance, and the past performance has been abhorrent. These are real dollars and cents that we have to spend, and we've had property destroyed by these people. There's been no compensation, no, nothing of that sort. And this is just going to be another problem, and I quite agree with my brother that I don't understand why they can still be operating if they don't have the permit to do it.
Okay, thank you, Mark.
Like I said at the beginning, I thought this issue was resolved 30 days ago, and it's back again.
Nope, and we'll, we'll clarify that in, in just a minute here, we, we got some confusion about the Board of Adjustments and the, the process, uh, in which this works, um, because it is complicated, but, um, Mark, to your comment about not being able to testify today, and I appreciate that, we all have to work, we all have to make a living. But this was also on two evening meetings, not that that's relevant to you, but, uh, we do try, we actually do try to reach out to our constituencies and meet in the evening for planning and zoning, so this was heard twice, uh, at 7:30 at night, um, just, just for your information, and I think you did testify on the, on the last meeting.
Yes, I was on both of the meetings.
Yep, okay, thank you. I, just so people don't think this is the only meeting that we're having for public hearing on this, we have had, this is actually our third one, so, thank you for those comments, I appreciate it. Other comments from someone else that hasn't testified at this point in regards to PC 0221, the Martini Dog Kennel? And I am going to have staff, uh, summarize some of these confusing, confusing points as far as the Board of Adjustments and the planning and zoning in just a minute here, so I just want to finish up the public hearing. Is there anyone else?
Deborah Henry?
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't get your name?
Jeff.
You got some bad, you got some bad, hold on just a sec, hold on, I think it was Jeff, hold on just a sec, you got some feedback coming into the...
Jeff Henry.
Jeff, alright, thank, alright, go ahead, Jeff.
I'm a neighbor to the east. Um, I just got a couple of things I'd like to point out, and this is, um, actually factual, it doesn't have anything to do with the dogs right now, it just has to do with the state of my neighborhood, and how they feel about the town. Um, they installed a pool a few years ago. They did not get a permit to install this pool until the contractor told them they had to get one and wouldn't do the work. They've stated, and some of you have been over and viewed their barn, that they spent $150,000 renovating their barn. I did not see a permit for renovating the barn, I did not see the tax records go up. They paved their driveway, I did not see a permit for the driveway, I did not see the tax records go up. They've actually rehooked their house, put on metal, I have not seen a permit nor the tax base go up for that. They started this business five plus years ago. They tried to get a permit and actually stopped the process because they knew what it was going to take in order to start this dog kennel, they stopped. Now, they spent the money and went ahead on their own and redid the barn illegally, and have been running it for five plus years. Angela says a couple of years now, um, that's when she started her website, but she's been selling dogs for a year. They filed an after the fact variance, and got denied, but are still running the kennel. I do not like that, it was shut down, if somebody else did something for three months with the county, wouldn't something be done? No, George says that we have to keep track of the barking dogs instead of him. What it is, what is it, the homeowners' obligation to do the work for the county, they should be doing it their own. Land taxes were just paid in January so that they could continue with this process. Everybody else around here's taxes have been paid and up to date all the time. We have been harassed, drive by faster if we call the sheriff, keep dogs outside longer and let others run free to make the other dogs bark. They send us texts after each message, after each meeting, I'm sorry. Trespassing, they continually go on our property to retrieve their dog, they don't ask first. Damage, two piles of countertops, wood and other completely, other things in the back of my shed have been completely destroyed by the dogs digging and roving through it. The screen door on my shed out back has been destroyed by the dogs scratching through it. If we leave doors open to any of our buildings, the dogs come in and pee on the tires and other things, really kind of gross. Completely destroyed a live animal trap I had out back to get rid of raccoons, there was a squirrel in it, they killed it, destroyed the trap. Destroyed the door to our kitchen to coop trying to get inside, my father-in-law happened to be around and chased them off before they got inside, or I probably would have shot their dog. Many bags of garbage strewn all over our yard we had to pick up over the year. Mailbox was run over by two of their semis trying to pass on a township road, really? Pickup was damaged by Rick after my father-in-law tried to stop his son, who ran through a yield sign, ran in front of him, tried to talk to him, had him slow down. Rick got upset, spun circles in the gravel road in front of mine driving with my pickup parked there, and flung rocks all over our driveway. We called the sheriff, but we did not witness it, so therefore, nothing they can do. Again, though, everything they do costs us money. They have two underground fences that are installed across my property, not there. We also had our lines surveyed twice, because the first time, Rick or his family, they denied they ever touched them, but the last were taken down. So I had to have them come back out and rein, reininspect it, find the, the markers. This time, I put a metal T-stake down, counted and passed the T part of it, that stake is now gone. I don't know, I'm sure Rick will say that nothing, he doesn't know what happened to it. We own a business in Manuketo, I have five employees. We have strict laws and regulations, Blue Earth County and Manuketo. We have to get permits to do anything we want to do, signage, everything, we follow that to the strictest of the law. But we feel like we're being, the county is now punishing us for being a whistleblower on them. Barking is noise pollution, insulating inside only protects fur workers. Dogs are outside in the same environment as now, and it doesn't work. They have a fence around their dog kennel right now, they have kennels that are outside, they can go in and out all the time. When the dogs spend most of their time outside, it's dang loud. This is our retirement home and property. It has, it and we have been abused for over five years now. You all want to, to plan our future here, they have not followed the rule, and you are foolish to think that they are going to start now. You will enforce the regs, boy, I said, who will enforce the regs, they will not follow. Will each of you take our calls at 2:00, 3:00 AM, the middle of the day, or the middle of the night, and come out here and enforce them? My guess is no.
Okay, thank you. You have any finishing comments, Jeff, you're a little over the five minutes, but I'll let you finish up unless you're done?
No, I'm good, I'm starting to get upset.
Alright, thank you. Okay, anyone else wishing to comment on 0221 that hasn't commented already, please? Anyone wishing to comment on PC 0221, the Rick and Angela DiMartini Dog Kennel? That hasn't testified at this point? That hasn't testified at this point? One last time for anyone wants to comment on PC zero two twenty-one. Hold on just a second, I can't quite understand, I didn't get your name or your address at this point.
I'm Peter.
That's better.
Okay, I'm Bruce Johnson. Captain Deborah Henry, dad and father-in-law. I put the building up just north of there, all this little charge distance away. Came out here for a repair on my own. Elder care, need to, I think the future here, I'm seventy-three years old. Daughter's all about for me. Need a couple of buildings, couple of lives, and a lot of couple of shacks that, with that fair on the roadway, that you can't, uh, leave, uh, but leave the living area, have drunk on. So we put up a quite substantial building, concrete flooring, floor, commercial steel building. This is a concrete building alone, we got a hundred and going dollars, and I'm tired of saying all that, I mean, I put, correct. You know, I want to do that so when I'm gone, they'll have something left over on the property there that we don't have to destroy and all the way. This started three years ago for me, I was coming out in summer to get the building along the contractor fucking building up. They complained, I wasn't a owner much, but they complained about the dogs when they're putting the building up, so I was done. Last two years ago in the summer, I've done a lot of work myself, and this went on, the dogs just kept getting worse and worse, you know? What's going on, you know? And this last summer, they were terrible. And I moved in in September, they're barking all the time, they're on the property, and you've heard it often, Captain Deborah Henry. Traffic and the dust. I was raised on a farm, and I call this agriculture, a bunch of dogs like that, that's not agriculture. I lived on a farm until sixteen and was a dog. I would expect cows and spinks and tractors and combine, that's agriculture, not a bunch of ninety dogs barking all day long. Very stressful. By knowing this, I sure checked when I sold my house in town and built this, that by knowing what's going on, it'd be next door to a commercial dog kennel. And when they permitted to put this building up three years ago, nobody told me anybody in commercial or anybody with any sense of permitting me like a dog kennel. By knowing that, I sure would have thought, wait, not building a hundred and some odd thousand dollar building. I'm going to quit now, thank you.
Thank you, Bruce, for those comments, but could I, could I just get your address? We didn't quite get that recorded earlier.
Address thirty-seven, three ninety-two, one seventy-four, line.
All right, thank you. All right, anyone else wishing to comment on PC zero two twenty-one that has not testified at this point? Okay, this is the last call for anyone wishing to testify on PC zero two twenty-one for the Rick and Angela DiMartini Dog Kennel. Okay, hearing no more public comment, I'm going to close the public portion of the hearing today and bring it back to the County Board for further action and discussion. At this point, is what I would like to do, is I would like to have George Leary maybe just answer a few of these questions of the testimony we heard today. And I think the, one of the largest ones that I think we need to clarify, George, is the process that this went through with the Board of Adjustments, and then the two public hearings, or the two hearings of planning and zoning, and now to us. Because it does have the appearance that people think that this was, was done a long time ago, and this is just the process and how it works. So could you please explain to the people that are still listening, the process, so they can try to separate the two permits?
So in November, a variance request was taken before the Board of Adjustment, and it was for the current location, and to reduce the setbacks to the property line and to the two residences, Henry's and Mr. Johnson's. And that first November meeting was, was tabled, they met out on site, I believe on November ninth, the Board of Adjustment did. They were given a tour of the facility by the DiMartinis, and that meeting resumed in December, and ultimately, that variance to reduce those setbacks was denied by the Board of Adjustment. The staff had asked the board, as the motion was made for denial, if they wanted to accept the condition, and that condition was that it gave them a grace period to bring that property into compliance. And the Board of Adjustment members rejected that, that condition for compliance and asked that the use be discontinued immediately. Shortly after that denial of that variance request, an interim use permit application was submitted to staff, and that went to the Planning Commission meeting in January, was tabled, and resumed again in February, and acted on in February. Or I should say, they forwarded a recommendation on to this body at their February meeting. So again, there are two totally different processes here. The first one was for variance to reduce the setbacks for that existing facility, that was denied, and the one that's in front of you today is for a new facility in a location in the southwest part of that property, that it meets all the setback requirements.
Meets all the setbacks, and we're the final say in it, so that's where the confusion, I think, comes in. Just because the planning and zoning members don't agree with it, the final decision is done here.
That's correct.
So, all right.
Can I ask a question?
Let's, let's, let me just go over a couple more things here, quick. This is something that I would normally ask for a motion to get on the table for discussion, but we do have three options here, basically, today. We can follow the recommendation from the stash, staff that was originally presented to the Planning Commission. We could follow what was going to be presented here today, we got some other conditions to add, we can discuss that one. Or we can follow the discussion and the meeting that they had at the Planning Commission for the denial. So, we're going to go a little out of sorts here, but, so we'll have some discussion, because we have three different options, and then we'll get a motion on the floor later. So, go ahead, Vance.
What options does the county have when somebody violates our permit process? What, I mean, what, what kind of teeth does the county have to penalize a person that violates our, our permit process? I mean, I'm hearing that this, this has been going on from two to five years, I'm, I don't know, but at least two years, that somebody's been raising dogs. I see on a Facebook page that they've got three or four employees that obviously must come and go every day, but they don't have a permit from Blue Earth County to do this. So what, what's the, what's the penalty and what's the process for the county to do something about that?
So, so just a little bit of brief history leading up to that. Approximately five years ago, there was a permit application submitted for, at that time, which was a conditional use permit for a kennel. They had paid their application fee, and as we're going through the process, the review process, the DiMartinis, the applicants withdrew that application. And then, if I remember right, that was in two thousand and sixteen. And again, if I remember right, in two thousand and nineteen, a conditional use permit was applied for again, and shortly thereafter was withdrawn. And the applicants said that they were, it was just their own dogs, and they were not going to operate a kennel as defined by the county ordinance. Sometime in two thousand and twenty, this, this came up again, and I don't remember what, what sparked this, if it was the applicants contacted us, there may have been some discussion between the county attorney's office, myself, and their attorney. Again, some of this is a little foggy right now, but, so that leads us to your question of enforcement. And typically, when there's an enforcement matter, regardless of what it is, we'll send a letter to the property owner, and if we know what the violations are, we'll spell that out in the letter. If we don't, and, and there's just maybe from a drive-by or a complaint, we'll ask for a meeting on site. If there's no response, we'll send a second letter. If there's no response to that second letter, a third letter will be sent out, and it, and it has a reference that if there's no response, this matter will be turned over to the county attorney's office, and at which point, we do work with the county attorney's office, and they work with us. We have a good relationship working there. So, at some point, they, they hired the, the services of an attorney, and so that, that did bring in the county attorney's office, and, and that ultimately led to the application for this interim use permit. So, you may be asking, what was the difference between interim use permit and conditional use permit? I believe in two thousand and seventeen, that conditional use permit was changed to an interim use permit, which allows review triggers for the, the request to come back for review again by the Planning Commission and County Board, where a conditional use permit, as long as they're abiding by the conditions, would go on continuously. Have I answered your question?
Well, you have, but I guess I have the question, is it appears that this business has been going on for five years. I looked at the Facebook page, and I saw the pictures, and, and, you know, I don't know if I'm reading it right or not, it's, but it appears they've been violating the law for, I mean, for this period of time. I myself grew up on a farm. I understand, we had dogs all the time. We never let our dogs continuously bark. You know, if our dogs went on somebody else's property and, and they got shot, that's the end of the story, because they were on somebody else's property. But I don't know what happens here, if, you know, I'm seeing all sorts of issues with the DiMartini's dogs going on other people's property consistently, up to this, probably yesterday morning, when, when the barking and stuff was going on. So that things aren't quitting, and I'm also seeing, you know, anger and stuff, saying, don't dare call the Sheriff's Department because we're going to get back at you, which really upsets me. You know, I'm, I'm seeing these things, is that they, you know, they've been doing this, they, the building permit with the barn, what he mentioned, the building permit with the driveway, which he mentioned, did we get a building permit for that?
No, and there would not be, on those items, there would be no permit required on the driveway, no permit required on the roofing. On the interior remodel of the barn, by itself, would not require a permit. That interior activity did not require a permit, it's the, the activity of, of those items that meet the definition of a kennel that do require the interim use permit, which you're acting on today.
Right.
So, so they, the, the activity of the barn, a building in there, didn't require a permit, but having the stuff and, and having a business in there does?
Correct. If I may, there was one other thing that you mentioned, Commissioner, that sparked my memory, and that is, and I can't go into details, maybe Mr. McDermott would like to, but there, there has been activity by our office and correspondence with the DiMartinis from quite some time ago, early, much earlier in two thousand and twenty, and even beyond that. And, and if you're working with Mr. McDermott's office, the county attorney's office, that ultimately led to them responding to us in a, a discussion between Mr. McDermott's office and the DiMartini's attorney, and that got us to this point today. So, there had, it was a process, but ultimately, they've applied for a interim use permit.
Is there any way that we can, I mean, if, if we, that we can order them and, and stop their business from continuing on from this day forward?
If I may.
They don't have a permit to run it, right?
Correct. There, there's a condition that's proposed here, and it, it may be somewhat difficult to follow, and that's condition number twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yep.
And it states that the breeding of dogs, offering dogs over four months of age for sale, boarding of dogs, all of which constitute a kennel as defined by the county ordinance, shall be discontinued immediately. Ordinance-defined kennel activities may not resume until a new facility, meeting the requirements of the ordinance, is constructed and operational. So here's what that means, is that the definition of a kennel states that it's a place where four or more dogs over four months of age are boarded, bred, or offered for sale. There's two components of that that I believe are applicable. Number one is those dogs that are being bred, and those that are being offered for sale that are over four months of age. So what it's saying is that they need to discontinue, if this is approved, with this condition, they need to discontinue breeding until after the new facility is operational. Dogs that are already carrying a litter of puppies may be whelped and their litters sold. The current and resulting litters must be sold prior to reaching four months of age. So, what it's saying is that no more breeding of dogs on site, those that are, are bred already may go through the process, but it also says, those dogs offered for sale that are more than four months of age constitutes a kennel. So, sell those resulting litters of puppies prior to them reaching four months of age, and no more breeding of dogs until this new facility is operational. The existing dogs may remain on site with that condition.
Thank you, George. Other questions, comments? There's no other questions at this point, I think is what I will do is maybe just get Pat's opinion on this, he's been involved in this quite a bit from the beginning, we'll hear from Pat for a little bit, and then I want George to talk a little bit about the extra conditions that the Planning and Zoning Board, which I thought was very smart on their part, did not want to try to put together on the fly at the Planning and Zoning meeting, asked staff to put together some more conditions, and George and staff and the attorney's office have looked at those, so I would like him to talk about those in a little bit. But we'll hear from Pat for just a brief minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. We'll just say to begin with, the information by Mr. Larry is, is very accurate from my perspective. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, with respect to any enforcement actions, I want to address what Commissioner Turnerberg was talking about. Anytime that we go forward or follow, we want people to comply with things. There's numerous times, there's numerous places out there that we know that people aren't complying, but we try to work with them, because worse comes to worse, if we go into court, the court system has been backlog for years, and this is something, a situation that the court's going to say should settle and should be taken care of. So, with that said, the primary goal has always been compliance. If the Board wants to give direction that we should start an enforcement action, I guess I'm willing to hear that from the Board, but the direction has always been to get that compliance portion. There's numerous factors that have been, and conditions that have been put into play or suggested by staff for your consideration in this matter. And as you stated, Mr. Chair, I believe that, you know, you can, you can simply go to deny this, you can go to approve it, you can go to whatever you want.
Say, Pat, can you pull your microphone up just a little bit? We can't quite hear you.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you can, whichever route is chosen here, we will respond accordingly if needed.
Okay. All right, thank you for that bit of information, Pat, we appreciate it. So at this point, any other questions from the Board for Pat? Thoughts? George, let's maybe just talk about the extra conditions, maybe just summarize, don't, don't go- Maybe just summarize, don't go through each condition. Tell us how many conditions that you took to the planning and zoning board. And then maybe we'll just summarize the, what was it, extra seven that we added?
I think there was seven or eight originally proposed, and you have 24 in front of you, 23 in front of you now.
Yeah. So maybe let's just talk about the ones that were added at this point.
So, Mr. Chairman, I rearranged those a little bit to flow better as one would read through there. But I did make note of some conditions that I believe are key that you may have asked questions on. If I was, would be able, I'll start with those.
I think that would make a lot of sense and try to hit on some of these points that we heard in the public hearing.
And I won't read them unless you ask me to. But number six, it is for the implementation of the noise control measures that they've outlined. Number eight addresses the dust control twice per year in the area, 100 feet in each direction, east and west of the neighboring residents. Number nine is the screening of the parking area. And the purpose of that is it's staff's belief that there's triggers that are making these dogs bark, one of which might be people pulling up to that parking area, dogs seeing them and starting to bark. Number 10 is the discontinuing use of the existing kennel. And it has a date of September 1st, 2021. And in a conference call between the county attorney's office and the representation of the DiMartini's, that date was expressed to them. And there seemed to be no major issue with that date on their behalf. Number 18 addresses expansion, that any expansion needs to come back before the planning agency and taken before the planning commission and approved by the county board. Number 19 addresses change of ownership. Again, that is one of the triggering mechanisms for review of an interim use permit, where if this was a conditional use permit, as it historically was prior to the ordinance amendment, but with an interim use permit, that can be a trigger for review. Number 20 addresses the change of management of that facility, that any types of change of management needs to come back before the planning agency and, if needed, reviewed by the county board. I'm just reviewing number 22 here very quickly. Basically, number 22, following the, it's in the, about the fourth line down. Following the first 12 months of occupancy, the reviews shall be reviewed by the county planning agency. And if necessary, they shall be reviewed by the planning commission and, again, brought back before the county board. And lastly, as we discussed, that number 23, the immediate discontinuation of all those activities meeting the definition of a kennel.
Okay. Thank you, George. And we've all reviewed these conditions. And a few of them have been mentioned in our public comment portion of this meeting, some concerns that we, that the surrounding property owners had. Some of them are outlined in these conditions, some others in the other conditions. And as George alluded to earlier, there's 21 conditions on this. And we started with half of that, I think, at the planning commission. And I think at the planning commission, again, as I mentioned, they certainly did want more conditions put on this if it was to pass, but they weren't interested in trying to articulate those conditions in the meeting, which I think pushing it back to the staff was a great idea. So as we had a chance to review these conditions, is there any thoughts with these extra conditions? Or are we ready to move forward with some sort of recommendation or motion?
Mr. Chair.
Kevin.
Maybe just a couple of questions or clarification. And I think if my math is right, you know, I'm a rural resident, live on a farm. We've always had dogs on the farm. My math is right, it's been 17 dogs over the last almost 60 years, eight different breeds, and dogs bark. Quite frankly, if, from my perspective, that's a good thing sometimes. If I've got kids alone in the house, or a spouse, or I'm in the shed or something, and somebody drives in, the dog barks, that's okay. But certainly, too much barking is a bad thing. We see dogs used in agriculture for security, whether it's with livestock, other things. But in this particular case, you know, I, as a commissioner, have not been contacted by anyone. I've not seen any photos or videos until today. So I appreciate the sharing of that. I've not been there. But I have a couple of questions on the conditions. And one was kind of talked about the traffic. I mean, it's, you kind of think of one trip per customer or potential customer and what the traffic is. But noise control, the barking, is what we're doing. One of my concerns, not only the bark collars, which maybe are not being used, but as I look at this and review this, a lot of this has got to do with the trees. But I think what we need to remember is trees take time. As I understand it, they'll be planting trees. The document talks about they'll be growing to about eight foot tall. A tree doesn't grow from planting it to eight foot overnight. And until we have those mature trees and that method of noise control, it's just going to take a while to get there. I think we have to take that into consideration a little bit. I'm certainly willing to continue to listen and learn. But I have some real concerns is what happens if we do have a new facility and we don't have those measures to control barking? Just because it takes time, years, quite frankly, for those trees or some of that kind of stuff to grow. So that's some of my initial concerns.
Thank you, Kevin.
Mr. Chair.
Kline.
I have concerns that this has been going on for five years and nothing has happened. They haven't improved with the barking. They haven't done any of the things that should have happened. They also didn't have a permit and didn't feel they needed one. So if, right now, they're applying for an interim conditional use permit, and this continues to go on while they're in the application process. Usually, people kind of clean the stuff up as they're applying. So I've got concerns if they're not doing what they're supposed, if they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing now, what's going to happen if they get the permit? Do you expect it to get better? So I've got concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Kline. Vance, do you have another comment or?
I, you know, I've always been one that's been upset with people that ask for forgiveness instead of asking for a permit. And it seems like this is exactly what this case is, is that these people have been doing this without a permit for a period of time. And all of a sudden, they want to put up a new building and expand their business. And they want us to forget what's happened in the past and how much, excuse me, hell, what they put their neighbors through. And I have a real issue with this. I would, I would, and I'm concerned even with, if we would deny this, what the county can do to stop what's happening at this time. Because this is a real issue. And we have, we have people that are being basically bullied because they're, they've got people that don't care if there's dog barking and coming on their property. That's my concerns.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Mark, do you have any thoughts at this point? Something that hasn't been mentioned already or?
Yeah, I share what some of the other commissioners are saying. And I, I often wonder then, yeah, if it's been this many years and nothing's done. If we do the interim, if we, you know, add conditions, yeah. It goes back to how do we ever figure through, what's the repercussions if they don't do the, what they say they're going to do if we pass all these under-conditional conditions to do, you know? So that boils back to that, so.
Yeah, and those are some very big concerns because not only will there be an issue with the dogs barking, whether we allow this or not, because they have personal dogs. They are allowed to run that barn with a few dogs in it, from my understanding, even without a conditional use permit. So that issue is always going to be there. And the fact that the applicants are willing to stick a relatively large investment, from my understanding, into a new building. And then how do we differentiate the difference between, is it the dogs and the dog kennel that are the issue? Or is it the other dogs that are the issue? How do we, how do we sort that out? So this certainly does have some very large challenges as a county board, no matter which route we go. If we decide to approve it, we have to try to figure out which dogs are making the noise. If we decide to deny it, it's not going to go away because the landowners have their own dogs and there is barking dogs out in the rural area. So it's not cut and dried and simple as nice as it would be. George?
Mr. Chair. So you're allowed to have your own dogs. How many dogs can you have that you can say are your own? And I'm assuming if they're your own dogs, you wouldn't be running a business. Maybe I'm incorrect.
So to answer the first part of your question, you know, as long as they're not breeding dogs or offering dogs for sale over four months of age, you know, that we really have no limit on the number of dogs in our ordinance.
And just one other comment. I like to think that we look at compliance as much as we can. But when it gets to a certain point, I think we have to take action. So that's my take on it. We want people to comply, and we want to help them to comply. But if they refuse to comply, I think we need to take action.
Okay. Thank you, Kline. Other thoughts, questions, comments? Vance.
Maybe it's a question for the county attorney, for Pat. What, what can a person do if a dog comes onto their property that's not their own?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I'm not going to answer that question because now you're asking me to give legal advice to potentially the public, and that's not my role.
All right. Thank you, Pat.
Thank you.
At this point, if no one has any other questions from George, George, do you have anything else to add at this time?
Nothing.
Have I summarized the planning commission's wishes so far fairly well? You don't have anything else to add to that? Well, I guess we're at a decision-making point here. So as I discussed earlier, we can follow the recommendation of the staff that was originally presented to the planning and zoning board, which was denied. We can move forward today with the vote of recommending approval of the conditional use permit, because it does fit all of the new guidelines and all the setbacks with the new conditions that were laid out by George summarized. And if anyone wants more clarification on that, I'd be happy to do that. But summarized by George. Or we can follow the decision of the planning commission and deny the application altogether. Those are my, my options, correct, Pat?
I would believe so, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
I would make a motion to deny application.
Okay. I have a motion to deny the application as presented by the planning commission.
I'll second. Landhammer.
I got a first and a second. Now, we have discussions. So I would like to, George, you had your hand up?
Mr. Chairman, just a question would be is would there be any conditions for denial of that, of that application?
And to cease operations.
And if there would be a timeline for ceasing operations?
Should have been done.
Well, would that?
Should have never started. So I guess I don't understand.
Yeah, maybe.
How you should, we should be able to sell. I mean, their operations should not be going on at this time. So why should we have to tell them to cease operations? I mean, it shouldn't have, it shouldn't happen.
The Board of Adjustments has already asked them to cease operations.
Immediately, correct.
And we can't overrule the Board of Adjustments, correct? At this point? I mean, so would adding that language do us any good at this point? I mean, it's already set up to be, I'm going to, that's going to be a tough one for Pat, but I'm just going to ask his opinion if he has one on that. Because the Board of Adjustments have already asked them to cease the operations. Would it be redundant for us to put a conditioner? Or could we put a condition there saying that they can finish out what they have there so we don't end up with a bunch of dogs at the county?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, my opinion would be is that the Board of Adjustments and the planning commission, the Board of Planning Commission, that's not their role. That would be the role for an enforcement action. And if that's the recommendation from this board, then that would be the direction that you would need to give staff and the administration and our office to proceed with enforcement.
Okay. The fact that it's already?
Then add that to my motion to cease operations.
Can we hold just one sec till I clarify? So it being part of Board of Adjustments, you're saying, by saying that, you're saying if we put the action on our motion, then our staff could work on that?
I don't think it's a necessary, necessarily, Mr. Chair Commissioners, an action item that needs to be specifically voted on. But there just needs to be that direction given to staff, administration, and our office that that is the wish of the board.
If we deny, if it votes, if we wanted to deny this today, then that would trigger the cease of operations. Okay? Is everybody clear on that? I mean, by making a motion to deny it, I think I'm hearing that it would, will not be allowed, so they would have to cease operations. Any other questions before we take a roll call vote? I think I'm just going to have a couple of comments here before I finish up. And if anyone else wants to ask one more time. But again, this is a very, very difficult decision, as this county board sits here and tries to figure this out. We certainly sympathize with the neighbors. We certainly appreciate the applicants trying to better their business and make it work for the surrounding area. So it is a very difficult decision. And I guess whichever way the vote goes, we'll have to deal with it. But at this time, I'm going to vote yes for it, or not to deny it. I'm going to vote no to deny it. I'm not going to vote to deny it because I think with the extra conditions we put in place, it set a really good precedence of them having to build a place that works. Staff has reviewed it, they meet the setbacks. And hopefully, it would be a better business at the end of the day. But I'm not interested in taking any conditions off of the other ones. So we'll just work through that. Other questions or comments? Hearing none, Stephanie, we do the roll call, please.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Pipo.
No.
Commissioner Landhammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Sternberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
No. Motion passes three to two to deny the permit. Thank you, George, for all your work. Really appreciate it. It was a very daunting task on the staff, the citizens of the area, the community, the Martinis for trying to put something together. But we'll just have to move forward after this. So thank you, George, for all your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, George.
Thank you, George.
Thanks, George.
All right, at this time, if it's all right with everybody, we will take about a 10-minute break until 10:40.
Sounds good.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you, everybody.
Hmm.[532.41]
All right, welcome back everyone. We will move on to our next item on our agenda and that's Phil Clausen from Human Services. Good morning, Phil.
Morning, Phil.
Hi, Phil.
Good to see you. Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have some action items to start with and then Kelly's overlooking at the new MRCI building and trying to get that staged for clinics later this week is what we're hoping for and so she gave me some notes to share with you as well about where we're at with the vaccine progress and how things are shaping up. First, Mr. Chair Commissioners, the action items under Public Health, one item and this is something we're obviously grateful for, a grant for eighty-six thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars from MDH for preparedness and it is specifically for the vaccine efforts. I really appreciate having that amount, I think with the MRCI building and the lease there and then some overtime issues, it's possible that we could burn through that fairly quickly, so I do make the Board aware of that even though it's a nice number and I think it really helps us keep moving. So for right now, we're doing well. The term of this grant is February first of twenty-one through June thirtieth of twenty-one, so that's the time period for that money. The second section is on financial assistance and there's two items under that. The first is Lingua One, who's a provider we use fairly heavily. There's an addendum to their contract for video remote interpreting and as you can imagine, this is preference based on the pandemic and we consider it now one of the essential services to be able to do interpreting remotely or virtually. The rate is two dollars and fifty cents per minute and that's actually lower than the standards that we have from other providers that offer the same service. The term of this contract, January first of twenty-one through December thirty-first of twenty-one. Also under financial assistance, patron companies, which is a transportation provider for medical assistance clients, this is our duty to have transportation available for medical dental prescriptions and other types of direct medical services that fall under that category for all of those who have medical assistance. These transportation rates are set by the state and I've brought other contracts before you where, you know, there's kind of a range, I think even the low end of the range with not many miles is still around seventeen dollars per ride and then goes all the way up to seventy-six dollars in tier one and that's dependent on mileage, just if somebody would have to go further away. The term of this contract is January first of twenty-one through December thirty-first of twenty-one. Under Supportive Housing, one item, and this is something I think the Board's aware of, that Partners for Foreable Housing, the Board's supported their efforts specifically to Teresa House and Welcome Inn. What Partners really wanted is case aid services and so we previously have provided fifteen thousand dollars annually and the Board supported that good work by doubling that amount to thirty thousand dollars annually, which will go directly to that position for resources and hours available through the case aid. The term of that contract, January first of twenty-one through December thirty-first of twenty-one. And then also just a couple of administrative items that are action items. The first of those being a letter that was included in your packet and some of the statute included in your packet where the Board's seen a letter of support, determination of need for a new provider in town. This provider's name is New Way and they are proposing an intensive outpatient treatment service for adults, men and women over the age of eighteen. It certainly would expand our services in our community. I think there's little doubt that we do need this, so my strong recommendation is that we would support this and I know the Board's always been supportive of even the competition that goes into providers coming to town, so we have a bias towards supporting that effort. This particular provider, I really liked, just in their letter talked about housing as a primary need for folks that have chemical dependency, which is really true and often not spoken to directly. And they also have people on staff that do bridge building and networking and like when we talk about our pandemic response, it's all about right now, our partnerships and trying to stay on the same page with each other. And so this provider sure seems to say that's what they value and so I would, from my chair, recommend that the Board sign off on this letter of support. And then finally, the last action item is task force appointments. A person being brought forth for District One, Monde Solomon, for the Mental Health Task Force and would ask that the Board would be willing to approve his appointment as well. Those are my action items, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the action items.
Okay, I have a motion of a second.
Second.
Any discussion, questions or comments for Phil?
Just, I'm surprised Mark didn't say this, it's Partners for Housing.
Oh, yeah, I was, yeah, I was so used to it the other way. It's changed because...
Oh, okay.
He tells us that all the time, that's why.
Thank you.
Well, I think we still have literature and stuff with...
Yeah, yeah, that's gonna be an entrenchment in my brain. I got you.
It's hard for all of us.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. If there's no further discussions, Stephanie, we call the roll.
Commissioner Pap.
Aye.
Commissioner Pevo.
Aye.
Commissioner Landkammer.
Aye.
Commissioner Strumberg.
Aye.
Chair Brunder.
Aye. Motion carries.
Can I go back? And I wasn't gonna vote against any of this, but the video remote, can it tell me what that's like?
Yeah, so normally, it's really not different than a lot of the waivers we've talked about because of the pandemic, but I think normally you'd picture an interpreter coming and being in the room with the person.
Okay.
And so what they're doing is using the virtual presence to do it virtually, so that's all it is and there's a different rate for that, that they put it as an addendum to their court contract.
I figured that's what it was, but I just wanted to be...
Yeah.
...clear. Thanks.
Thank you, Phil.
Thank you and Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have some information and discussion items. The first of those being just a few slides from our Supportive Housing programs and we do have two different programs, their names are similar, so that's much like what we just talked about when names are similar, they get confusing, but the first two slides are from our Hearth Project. So this is a regional project, really of eight counties that we serve through Blue Earth County as the host. And just a couple of slides to show you the movement. Of course, the pandemic has affected our practices in a lot of different ways and this is a particular way where I think, you know, locating people, communicating with these folks, sometimes not being able to use any kind of technology to communicate have all created different kinds of challenges for staff in this particular area. And so how, I think it might take us a little while to sort out exactly how that all looked in retrospect, but looking at a snapshot right now, the first slide shows enrollment percentages and you'll see the split out between single households at a little over sixty percent and multiple person households closer to forty percent. The upper left-hand corner shows enrollment numbers, so we had seven new households, which I actually think is good considering the circumstances that we're working under and total participants at this point is a hundred and twenty-five and that breaks out to sixty-eight different households depending on if that's a multi-person household or a single person. The second slide looks at when there is movement. We had nine people exit the program this year and you'll see the different reasons for this. If you look at the middle of the bar graph, there's two areas that are the highest bars and one leaving voluntarily to live with family and friends, the highest bar leaving voluntary with subsidized permanent housing. Those are the ones we pick, obviously, those are, that's what we're shooting for. There's other things like a couple people that became incarcerated, that's what we're trying to avoid, but we understand that's part of the picture and part of what some of these individuals are facing in their reality. So I think all in all, it's a really good picture of how this work is done and in a large way, how we'd like it to look. The next slide is a different program that we run, Long-Term Homelessness Program and this is really, the simplest way for me to describe this is a staff that we presented to Bob and the Board about adding a case manager really for housing, that's what it is. And so it's much more of a localized footprint and Maria Fitzsimmons is the staff who does this work and you'll see that our enrollment here is kind of looked at in the last four years, the closing during the year, which we've had some movement and then also some new enrollees in that. Andrew, who's our supervisor over these programs, says that, yeah, it has been hard to, at times, stay in touch with people, so that particular piece of case management for somebody that might be in a transient situation, looking for housing or having a history of not having stable housing, is one of our hardest populations that we've had to serve, especially with the pandemic. And then I'll just move right into the next slides and this has to do with our South Central Community-Based Initiative, a mouthful, we often call it SDCBI or it's also the Adult Mental Health Initiatives, those are all the same thing and we've been up and running for quite a long time and seeing a lot of success, I think, in our strategies and our innovation in some of these areas. The first graph has a lot happening with it, but you'll see the line graph year over year and you will see like two thousand sixteen, when we started the Yellow Line Project, how a lot of the mobile assessments went up dramatically and have stayed up, which we're really, really pleased with, that is exactly what we wanted. And this, these are all, I should make it clear again, regional data, so this is everyone in our ten county area is the initiative. So ten counties contiguous to Blue Earth were the fiscal host for this project and again, it's really core service for us, been mainstreamed over the years. The other really interesting thing that I share every year, but that dip in the crisis line, that's when the state took over the crisis line and it's kind of interesting that it dramatically went down and then when we took it back, it dramatically went back up. And certainly, you all representing us on a community basis and I guess my affinity towards the local government, you'll see that sometimes things work a certain way and sometimes they don't. And centralizing that, I think this is a pretty striking picture of centralizing at a state level did not work very well and the thing that I'm proud of is that then we undid that, we said, okay, well, we better bring it back home. Now, it could be a data problem, it could be that there were more calls than we realized, I have not really gone and examined that, but it is a very striking graphic of what happened in that area, as well as when we've shined the light on our work in Yellow Line, our multidisciplinary work, that that's had a big effect as well. The bar next to it is the Mobile Team Assessments and you'll see that broken out into a lot of different areas. The Provider Group, you can kind of look through the list, the Case Managers and Mental Health Service Providers who refer and then Law Enforcement and certainly the Emergency Department is a big part of that picture. And then finally, the graph on the bottom of the page, looking at how mobile assessments break out from all the different referral sources and the two big areas where people tend to go for assistance and diversion is through the Crisis Center and also Home With a Plan. The next slides are similar, except it just looks at law enforcement and you'll see the breakout there. I certainly appreciate the representation from Mankato PD and how they're a really heavy user of all of our crisis services and that dramatic increase, but really, it is across the board and we're open to that from all law enforcement and you'll see the same breakout at the bottom of the page. Again, there's this triage that happens, can some folks go to Crisis Center, can some of these folks go home with a plan, the same strategies are our bread and butter. I always like to be very careful about how I say these things, because if we overstate at once, our credibility in what we've got going as far as Yellow Line Project and stuff could be put in jeopardy, but I don't have a problem with looking at that graphic and saying there's eighty-two people that either went to the Crisis Center or home with a plan and I think they could have, could have gone to jail, maybe not, depending on what it is and I also want to respect, cops have been doing triage forever, this isn't a new thing for them, but, so not all of them would have gone, but they maybe could have gone. And so it's hard when we're doing prevention work to quantify that and to capture that, like what would have happened, but I think this is one where it would be, if we say it right, fair to say that these are folks that could be treated in a different way than the way we're trying to creatively treat folks now and give options for this diversion. The next slide is just a showing of commitments, the actual last two slides are about commitments in our initiative, again, the ten county area. You'll see a breakout between folks that have both mental illness and chemical dependency, so the duly diagnosed, the chemical dependency only or mental illness only, so that's the key to looking at the chart. You'll see that there was a significant jump up here in this last year and on the final slide, you'll see a breakout more to our data for our county from two thousand nineteen to twenty and again, you'll see some increases in the number of petitions and the number of commitments with or without the Jarvis. And the Jarvis is when medications are mandatorily, you know, expected through the courts, so that we feel like somebody does need to be medicated, we have to bring it to court, that's what a Jarvis hearing's about and the judge decides if, yes, they will be given meds against even their will or not, so that's the difference to that. So I'm gonna maybe take a breath and just say those are my reports for both the Supportive Housing and the Initiative, the Adult Mental Health Initiative. Any questions on that before I move on to Public Health?
Any questions?
Just a comment, I think the progress that's made, been made with Supportive Housing and the Crisis Center has really made a difference in people's lives and Blue Earth County Human Services, we're the leaders statewide on that, so I just want to tell you how much I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Appreciate that, Commissioner.
Second data. It's true.
Well, and you guys have been incredibly supportive in that area and we continue to kind of stick our necks out because we feel confident, because you guys have had our backs over many years and we've been leading that. This case management piece, that last slide I showed you from what Maria does for us is really an experiment, but as far as I know, we're the only county that actually is doing that right now, so it's another innovation that seems to be working quite well and I see case management as kind of our bread and butter where I'd say everything builds around our case management core. And so that's really an important comment about how we're doing that Supportive Housing work. I was at a meeting and I know the Board has seen some of this, but we have lots of programs and lots of things going on in Human Services, but this, just the end of this last week with La Sura County and with Rice County and they've kind of, we've rearranged some of Andrew's time, our supervisor, who has expertise here to cross over and do a three-county collaborative to try to say, how do we kind of claim some of this turf and become expert in just what you're talking about, Commissioner, is in the housing world. And obviously, we're not looking at retail, we're looking at, you know, cost-effective housing and all the transient issues that go on below that. And so Andrew has a passion for that and Rice County and La Sura County have been willing to partner with us in real dollars and cents to try to support him in doing more of that work for all three counties, so I'll be letting you know how that goes as it builds. It is, I always say, we build in the dark, we're at that stage right now where there's a lot of unknowns, but there's a lot of need and it's kind of a no-brainer from my chair anyway, that when we invest a dollar there, you save three, is the way it feels to me. I am gonna read through Kelly's talking points, I appreciate her efforts to do this and I will do my best. You know, Bob and Josh and Jesse, we're meeting very regularly and so depending on what your questions are, I might also ask for help, but I feel like I'm pretty well-versed in what's going on. It is a week-by-week, sometimes day-by-day story. Really, the story has been about vaccinations and getting up to speed with how we push shots out into people's arms, literally, and some of that, I want to always start with the basics, like we don't control how that has been described to us or prescribed to us, it's come through either the state or the CDC and then we don't control any of the doses. We get to ask, but when we've asked for more than what we've historically had, we never get it. So it's one problem from me, which is we don't have enough doses right now, that's the problem statement, that's it. And then, once we get more, we've also been a little bit cautious about what if we get flooded, what if we go from basically three to five hundred doses a week for public health to a thousand or five thousand, what if we ever could get a supply like that? Well, that would really challenge us in how we're setting the table. What's happening and what I'll read through, what Kelly has for us here is, I really think the strategy is try to push it out to a lot of vaccinators, not just public health, so there's a lot of different roads that we're gonna talk about right now. And I think that strategy is really smart, because you have a lot of clinics going on at different times, more small to mid-sized clinics rather than big ones, but I saw like New York has a huge, I mean, the cities did the Excel Energy Center for teachers and I know New York's done big tent approaches and Texas has and so I have not heard any talk of that in Minnesota, saying we're gonna do something on that huge scale, but we'll see what happens if they do have a large option. A large option would call all of us together, probably like H1N1 kind of picture, where we do a big clinic for the public. I think right now, reading the tea leaves from my perspective, is that they're saying pharmacies, medical providers, public health, all do shots and that's also a good strategy and so we'll see how the vaccine distribution goes. So Kelly said that there's current distribution model is federal allocations, which is somewhat new, to contracted pharmacies such as Walgreens, Thrifty White, CVS, Walmart. So the feds are pushing vaccines directly to some pharmacies, that's relatively new and it's one of the many strategies I'm about to read you. The state, so that's through the feds, the state allocation has three basic pathways, I'm sorry, pathways. The first is the big healthcare systems, so Mayo, U of M, Fairview, Alina, yes, Mankato Clinic, not in that group and I'll tell you where they fit. So they kind of have their own distribution pathway, it's the big medical providers, that they'll get direct dosage and they have already had some of that happen and they'll give shots and they'll run their clinics. Federally qualified healthcare clinics, this isn't a big number for us, but because we have Open Door, that's, they have a direct pathway because they're FQHC, FQHC is the acronym for that. And then the final group is public health and our coalition, which would include like Mankato Clinic, ourselves, so that's the third pathway for state allocation. So the state allocation is big healthcare, federally qualified health clinics like Open Door and then the third group is local public health and all the other pharmacies, all the other clinics that aren't big, big box kind of clinics. So that's our status right now. I wish I wouldn't, yes, I wish I wouldn't have to say this, but it changes and this has changed and I think it might continue to change, so this is the distribution plan right now.
I was just curious and you might not know the answer to this, Thrifty White, I know, is doing, would they fall under the federal pharmacies?
Yeah, so they were...
Okay. Or the state, state, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so that's, Thrifty White was federal, actually, is how Kelly has it listed as of right now, so Thrifty White would be considered a bigger pharmacy that gets a direct allocation from the feds, is how Kelly has this.
I, it's been interesting talking to people who are getting vaccines or, and calling Thrifty White at two o'clock in the morning might get you a vaccine, I mean, it's just, and some people are just spending their lives on websites.
Yeah. Which is probably the biggest pain point and I know we're beating it in the ground, but I'm just saying, more vaccines would really help us and I think most of the problems and crossroads we're running into have to do with supply. It's a supply problem and it's a pretty simple issue. How it trickles out has a little different face, like when you see people chasing, spending a lot of time chasing, when there's no vaccine, you don't want to call them off, because they might get through a lottery door or something, but yeah, I received some of those calls, I'm sure you have as well, and they're painful calls, as well as our own families, I mean, we have a long ways to go yet. So the local allocation information, this is another issue, is when, and they've shifted this as well, is when we're notified and when we're asked for how much we might be able to do. We've, I think, overasked and always gotten dosage, just to give you a ballpark, between maybe three and five hundred is really where we're at. So that's what I'm saying, is the hundreds are different than if we could get more to a thousand and all of those different categories could get maybe more to a thousand, that's when I think, George is out in the hall afterwards, we were just chatting, I haven't had a chance to visit with him, he's like, what will make a big difference? And I said, once I think we get to that kind of a scope, right now, we're all kind of looking at these few doses and from the feds to the states to local, trying to figure out how do we distribute, so that's the pain point by far. We're asked when, what we're ready for to make sure that we're stand-ready on Fridays and we receive on Tuesdays. And so for this week, just for an example, which is a little disappointing, because I think the week before we were at five hundred...
I think four hundred.
Oh, the week before and four hundred this week is what I'm saying, but...
Four hundred this week.
Yeah, so actually, it's trended down a little bit, is what my, is that right, Jesse? So I think we were at five hundred and when I saw four hundred for this week, I was a little disappointed, because that's not what we want. And so Thursday and Friday, we're gonna shoot for some clinics, that's why Kelly's not with us today, they're trying to set up that new site, which we're very grateful for and Thursday, Friday will be our target to try to use that new site and if we get these doses to, well, today we shouldn't receive them, so keep thinking it's Monday. Ninety percent of the doses must be administered within seventy-two hours, so just to let you know how we're doing, this is a measurement they have for us, all doses must be delivered within seventy, twenty-four hours, nope, we must report within twenty-four hours. So there's two measurements, we have a seventy-two hours, ninety percent of the dosage, for us, we shoot for a hundred percent, and a twenty-four hour standard to report back whenever we do administer any doses. And we've been fully compliant with that, every clinic we've held, we've been able to hit our standards and again, what would challenge us if all of a sudden that volume goes way up, we might be stretched to get everything out the door and all that, right now, that is not the problem, we're able to comply with this. And then, of course, the second dose is always twenty-eight days later, so that's part of the math and the flow of vaccines as well. I do have just a couple of comments about collaboration, but is there any questions that we have at this point about the distribution or where we're at?
And I'm getting in the weeds, I think, but is it an electronic report? I mean, as opposed to, you know, an enormous amount of work, I guess, is what I'm asking.
Yeah, no, it's standardized, which is good, we have an intake system that's standardized, which creates though, a bit of a bottleneck, I know to you the heart of your question, and then our reporting system is called MIC, M-I-I-C, and that's a standardized reporting system. The good news is that it's not all over the map and it's not, you know, messy, there's a way to do that. The hard news is that you can't just bring anybody in to enter data or to know those, either the intake system or the reporting out system, you have to be kind of trained and knowledgeable, so Kelly's been using a lot of our staff to do that work and when we say, well, let's just go get some temp staff, well, we're gonna have to train them or it's gonna be not easy to, I mean, it's not rocket science, but it's not simple either and to your point. But I do think those systems seem to be functional, we're not running into roadblocks that I've heard with the recording system or the intake systems that we're using.
Good, thank you.
Chair, did you just quickly, did you say like Cub and HIV, are they along with the drug?
You know, I think those, so the list I have, Commissioner, for the federally contracted pharmacies are Walgreens, Thrifty White, CVS and Walmart. The smaller ones, I think, would go through our coalition and so they are listed, but they're like, why, the difference between Mankato Clinic and Mayo is the difference between Thrifty White and Walgreens, some of these and Cub, HIV, those would be in our allocation, so I think, but what's also happened is sometimes the state will say, you must give out of your four hundred doses, a hundred to the pharmacies, so they might keep doing that. Yes, so it gets to be tricky and that's why we can't say for certain how that all goes. Up till now, we haven't been making those decisions and yet, I think when we get into the over sixty-five, which is where I'm ending this, this report, is as we start entering into more of a public clinic, so up till now, just to say it from my way of thinking, is we've worked through... So, up till now, just to say it from my way of thinking, is we work through employers. And so, you know, really everything we've done, the latest one has been the schools. We call the school, who's their employer, and say, hey, bring your staff, and we're going to, we're going to give you vaccination, you're next. Now, when we get into over sixty-five, that's much more of a public, um, situation. It's not about your employer, it's about how old you are, and maybe if you have underlying conditions, that's still floating out there. Um, a lot of the folks that are into that age bracket and public clinics have been doing the elder, the oldest folks first, so eighty-five and up, and then, we go from there on down to sixty-five category is the group. So, um, just to give you more scale and scope, the collaborative efforts, um, Kelly has a whole paragraph of how we've worked with all these, um, Commissioner, the farm, local pharmacies and the clinics, and things have been going quite well. Um, a high point earlier this month, we gave, you know, seventeen hundred vaccines in a forty-day period between, between Mankato Clinic, Mayo, and ourselves. And so, that was kind of our high, high watermark so far. Um, it's a good number, but I, I think we could do more, even if we were given more. So, just to give you some, again, sense of what's going on. Um, planning and coordinating meetings do happen Monday, Wednesday, Friday, so three times a week. It's, it's quite constant, and we've needed to do that. Um, and, like I said, we're continuing to vaccinate through the Phase 1A priority groups, so those are the employers, and now, and school staff have been the more recent ones. And now, um, some of our partners are already moving to over sixty-five, and we hope to get there, you know, in the near future. That's our next big challenge.
So, Mr. Chair, have we finished 1A?
Not quite. So, that's, even this week, I mean, I would say we're, within this week or so, that's our goal, and then we'll go to over sixty-five would be our next step. So, that's what we're trying to clean that up. And I, you know, there's things like, um, people that say no, and then, oh, I meant yes, and what do you do with them? So, um, you know, we're trying to work through that too, and not to be too rigid, but also, we need to keep, I tell, like, even our staff, we're going to keep moving. You're, you're, you're on the list, if you want it, otherwise, we're moving. So, that's kind of how we've done.
One other question. Um, I've heard, um, some places have a little more vaccine in theirs, um, and some have less, um, which makes it really difficult to schedule.
Yes.
I, I'm assuming we're seeing the same thing?
Yes, we are, and we actually had a kind of significant problem, and maybe, just from my gut sense, maybe a little overrepresented in struggling with how many shots you can take out of a vial, is what this issue's about. And we kept, there's supposed to be ten, and we kept getting nine. Well, that's, that's a problem. It's a real problem when you're doing a second-dose clinic, and you're bringing people back, and those people have all got the first shot, you say, yeah, come on back, and then all of a sudden, you're short on vaccine, and I think some other counties have run into that trouble and had to turn people away. What we've also learned, though, is to live and learn, is that the, the syringe itself matters, and so, we found some other syringes that draw up maybe a little less vaccine in them, just because of how they're engineered, and that that has made some difference as well. So, the measurement of where that line is, and how much you take into each, um, each, um, you know, syringe, seems to matter as well. But, um, yeah, you don't want to be shorting people, but you also don't want to short a clinic where you run out of vaccine and end up with a line of disappointed people that have been spending twenty-four seven trying to get on the list, whatever, so...
Thanks.
Yeah, well, thank you all, it was good to see you. Have a good day.
Any other questions for Phil, before he heads out? Thank you, Phil, for that.
So, if we do the, like, the public, are we going to have a bigger area than the government center, or is that what's...
Right, so the MRCI location I was referring to, where Kelly is right now, is something in Bob, was part of, um, getting that contract. We did use it for some of the elections, and so, we had been down that road with them before, and we did secure a lease, and that will, compared to the basement of where we've been in the government center, um, there's a, a lot more square footage, let's put it that way. And so, we are saying that there's two options now in this new setting, Commissioner, that we'll have a small clinic, kind of the size of what we've done in the basement, and a medium-sized clinic that's probably double that capacity. And so, we can do either of those, and what I like about that is, we're going to move, this is the intention, we'll see how things go even today, but move our whole works over to one spot, and be able to do, if we have less doses, a smaller clinic in that same spot, or expand up to a larger clinic. And that's when we might, you know, look at the overtime costs, or trying to look for more staff. So, that, that is the next move up for us. What we don't have right now, that I know of, even from a coalition standpoint, is an option for a really large clinic. There's obviously buildings, but we're not set up for a really large clinic. And I'm interested in being proactive about that thought, too, because if this vaccine really started rolling, I don't want to sit around and have a different problem, which is, we don't know how to do the logistics for that.
I understand.
We should have made the basement bigger.
Yeah, yeah, we should have made...
Thanks, Phil, and tell your staff how much we appreciate all they're doing.
Yeah, we really do.
They've done yeoman's work, and I'm sure they're so tired.
Yeah, well, I know Commissioner Pat, when he was over just visiting with us, too, it's, it's about them, it really is, and they're just, they're, they're definitely burning the candle at both ends, and so, they're, they're the, the real heroes in this. And we're not through it yet, so we got a lot of work...
But someday, this too shall end.
Yeah, that's right, Kershaw, we need that. Keep, keep saying that out loud. Good to see you all.
Thank you.
Thanks, Phil.
All right, we'll move on down to administrative.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, the first item is the county board minutes for February second.
I'll move the minutes?
That's second.
Got a first and a second for the minutes? Any discussion? Seeing none, Stephanie can do the roll.
Commissioner Pat?
Aye.
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye.
Next would be the bills for the two weeks indicated.
Stromberg, but, um, passes the bills.
Got a first and a second?
I'll, did you say, uh, did you?
You're going to second it.
I'll do the, I'll move the bills.
No, advance movement, right?
I think you dodged it, that's... Yeah, I'll second it then, yeah.
Got a motion on a second? Questions?
I didn't get it all right, but I...
Yeah, I didn't quite... No questions on the bills? Stephanie, we do the roll call, please?
Commissioner Pat?
Aye.
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye.
Motion carries. Human Resources.
Well, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number seven in your packet is the Human Resources Agenda. We do have an action item for the board's consideration today, and that is the authorization to initiate recruitment for two senior land use planners in our Property and Environmental Resources Department. Uh, we'll tell you that one of those positions would be an internal recruitment, uh, to do some reorganization within the department, and then, the other would be an external recruitment intended to address, um, some of the enforcement and volume issues that we're currently seeing in the planning and zoning area.
Do I have a motion to approve the two senior land use planners?
I'll move approval. Landcammer?
Have a second?
Second.
People, thank you, Mark. Any discussion, questions? As we discussed, uh, land use issues and enforcement this morning, how appropriate that we have this next on the other item, so... I, I think this will be good. I work with planning and zoning a lot, they are certainly working extremely hard over there, and then, when you have an issue, that we just seen this morning, that takes hours and hours of, Pat and his staff, um, spent a lot of time on this this morning, and, uh, so it, it just throws everything off, and you got to get the other regular work done, too. So, I appreciate us moving forward with this. If there's no other questions, I'll ask for roll call, Stephanie.
Commissioner Pat?
Aye.
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, then, under informational items, we did receive a resignation of a library clerk that does some on-call work. We also have initiated recruitment to fill a land use specialist position that we've had on hold as part of our flexible hiring freeze, but as we head towards spring and the construction season, feeling like, uh, we need to have that position, uh, filled soon. Then, we did receive a resignation of a correctional officer in the jail, and so, we have initiated recruitment to refill that position. And then, lastly, we had a change in employment status of a temporary deputy sheriff to a full-time, permanent deputy sheriff position. Be happy to answer any questions the board has on any of those items?
Any questions? Advance.
So, what's a temporary deputy sheriff? I guess I never knew we had one of those.
We had received some grant funds to do some extra enforcement, but it was a time-limited grant, and so, we did a temporary, uh, position, just to do those grant functions. We had a resignation of another deputy, and so, moving this individual from that kind of temporary grant-funded role to more of a traditional deputy sheriff role.
Kind of like the old cops grants that they used to have, uh, years ago?
Might predate me, but it sounds like it.
Yeah, I mean, I, I remember back when I was on, they had these cops grants, and they only lasted one or two years, and then, the department either had to let them go or fill them in, and...
Same concept, you know, this was a, um, a speed or alcohol enforcement sort of grant that was time-limited, and there was no guarantee that that money would continue, so it was, uh, um, a temporary assignment.
Well, good for this officer.
Any other questions on the informational items? If not, we'll move down to the next item.
All right, uh, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number eight in your packet is a Board of Adjustment Appointment. Mr. Michael, or Dusty Riley, has applied to serve on the Board of Adjustment, where we do have, um, a vacancy. Um, Mr. Riley does currently serve on the Planning Commission, and there is some value in terms of kind of understanding those, uh, property use issues relative to the Board of Adjustment. And so, staff are recommending appointment of Mr. Riley to the Board of Adjustment for a term that would end in December of twenty twenty-two.
Pat moves.
Do you have a second?
People seconds.
Thank you. Any discussion? I've been on the Planning and Zoning Board, Dusty, for three or four or five years, maybe, I don't know, but he does a, does a good job, he makes every meeting. We have a really good planning commission group, actually, we're very, very consistent about punctuation and being there on time, and all that. Very important when you have public hearings, so, could be a good asset to the Board of Got a motion and a second? If there's no other discussion, I'll ask for roll call.
Commissioner Pat?
Aye.
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Next would be, uh, a memo in your packet regarding, uh, construction management professional service contract, as the board has, um, directed staff to move ahead with, uh, further planning on a, uh, potential public workshop here in Mankato. Um, it was felt we needed to engage with a construction manager, much as, uh, we did with the Government Center project. Uh, Kraus Anderson, uh, was a firm that we worked with on that project. They have submitted a proposal that, uh, was very similar to, uh, the proposal that was given to us for the Government Center project, although they have reduced some of the costs in some of those areas, uh, given our history and kind of the current, uh, construction environment. So, staff are recommending authorization for the chair and administrator to enter into an agreement with Kraus Anderson for those construction management services.
Stromberg moved to approval.
Have a second?
Landcammer seconds.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Talked about this at the work session just a week ago, wasn't it?
Yep.
Got some feedback from the board, and our consensus there was that we've worked with Kraus Anderson in the past, and they've done a good job for us, so...
Yeah, I think we were really happy with what they did with, uh, the Government Center, and, uh, showing how professional they are to work with, so, uh, find, find when you spend a little bit of money, you can save a lot, lot of money when you have good people like this.
Mr. Chair, and, and, and they're working with, um, a local company also, so, it's, it's a nice mix.
Very nice.
Does it have any other comments?
I, I would just say, from a staff perspective, it was, um, I think, important that Kraus Anderson, um, assured us that we'd be working with the same people, that we already have relationships with, and kind of understand their style and, um, their expertise, and so, we were very happy to hear that they would have the same team here for us to work with.
Okay, I got a motion and a second for the construction manager. No other questions? Stephanie, you want to call the roll?
Commissioner Pat?
Aye.
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I have number ten in your packet, is a very similar sort of, um, a professional service contract, uh, this time with, uh, ISG here in Mankato, who also has been working closely with us in the planning, that's already taken place with the public workshop. They, um, as Commissioner Landcammer mentioned, have been working closely with Kraus Anderson up to this point. Uh, we typically work with ISG under a retainer contract, but for these big type of projects, uh, the Government Center, this one, they're recommending that we have a separate agreement just to cover, um, the costs associated with this development. And so, staff are bringing that forward today for the board's consideration.
Do I have a motion to accept?
I'll move the, uh, ISG, uh, for a professional service contract with ISG.
Okay, you got a first from Mark, or a second?
Second.
A second from Kevin. Any discussion? Nice to see local contractor helping us out, so...
And they've done, they've done a good job before, and I think they will again.
Okay, there's no other discussion. Stephanie, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Pat?
Aye.
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Landcammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Stromberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, then I would like to just have a, a short conversation with the board about our business assistance grant program. Um, as we talked about last week at the work session, uh, we were a few days ahead of the deadline, uh, for our grant program, and, uh, the number of applications we had received were, um, less than we had hoped for. Um, as, uh, though we talked, uh, last week, we were anticipating that we would see a large number of applications that would come in right before the deadline, and we certainly did see that, uh, but we still remain in a position where we have some excess funds. Um, at this point, I appreciate Courtney, um, who's on, uh, the video with us, uh, the work that she did over the weekend, uh, process as many applications as she could as they were coming in. Uh, she has reported that there are a hundred and fifteen applications that, uh, have been deemed eligible, and there are an additional twenty-six applications that haven't yet gone through the review process, but certainly will in the next day or two. She also has fifteen applications that need additional information to determine the eligibility. All totaled, uh, those applications, uh, total about nine hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the board will recall that we have a little over one point three million dollars of funding available under, uh, the resources that were provided by, uh, the state legislature. So, that leaves us with about four hundred thousand dollars of, uh, funding that hasn't, um, been utilized based on the applications we've received. We may still get a few applications today that maybe were sent by the mail and we might consider allowing those to be considered. But we obviously are going to have some funding that is uncommitted based on our current criteria associated with the program that was authorized. I think one thing that the board could consider for adjustments to our program is adjusting the grant amounts. You know, we set certain dollar amounts in the criteria based on maybe some of the data we had from the CARES Act grant funds that we administered back in 2020. We didn't get as many applications this time as we did under the CARES Act. So we have more resources potentially that could be made available to these applicants. So that would be one way to kind of utilize all the funding, just change those grant amounts based on the funds available and continue to move forward. Or the board could consider making changes to the criteria, the eligibility factors, and extending the deadline or changing, you know, some other criteria. We had a 25% revenue reduction criteria that could be adjusted downward to allow a few more applications in. But I think you'd have to reduce it down to about a 15% reduction in revenue in order to really capture some of those that have been submitted. And you also, I think, then run the risk of people or businesses that looked at the criteria didn't apply and now you've changed kind of the rules of the game. So, you know, as, as staff have kind of talked about it a little bit and considered some options, I think with the number of applications that have been received, it might be our recommendation that we focus more of our energy on adjusting those grant amounts to basically provide those businesses that did apply and were approved an additional level of grant. But we're looking for some direction here today.
All right, thank you, Bob.
Mr. Chair?
I appreciate that and, you know, we did talk at the work session about a deadline is a deadline and we did get more, which is, is a good thing. I'm not a big fan of changing, changing the rules in the middle of the game, whether it's deadlines, criteria, whether it's number of employees or, or the percentage loss and we had to kind of do our best estimate as what we thought we would have and, and make it available to all that could. But I certainly would lean towards the area of adjusting upward to match the funding for those that are already in.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Vance.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I absolutely agree with Commissioner Pat. I, if we have to give 30% more to all the people to, to, to spend the $1.3 million or whatever it is, or 50% more, whatever, if we open it up to, to other things, we're going to upset a lot of people. And it's going, and we won't have, we won't be able to do it on time.
Right.
So I, I think we should just use what we have already and then increase the amounts.
Mr. Chair, I agree with the, with Commissioner Pat and Commissioner Strumberg.
I, I concur and of course the ones that are in the pipeline, the ones that maybe don't have all their information, you know, they should, you know, they'd be included too if they bent that out, but yeah, we should go with it. The ones that really met the deadline, then I don't know.
And you'll probably have to do it on a percentage basis or, because I can't imagine all of them are the $5,000 or they were, there's some more.
No, it was across the board.
Across the board.
Not some of the higher levels. We just didn't have many businesses with more than 25 or 30 employees that apply. But within those bottom two or three categories, there was a good distribution there.
Okay. I'm, I'm fine with doing that.
I'm, I'm good with it. And what a nice surprise.
Do you have, I mean, obviously we got to vote on this, but do you have a percentage that would make up the difference?
I played around with it a little bit yesterday. I would like to have a little more time, if you don't mind, to really analyze it based on kind of the final number of applications that have been approved. So giving Courtney a little more time to get through all the applications. I think one of the things I'd like to study and talk to the board a little bit more about are the, the new business category. You know, we modeled that to match what the state department of revenue grants were to those businesses that were impacted by the executive order that closed down restaurants and gyms. To change those dollar amounts is something that I'd like to study a little more just because I think that is a little different category than some of the rest of the program that we developed here. So there might be differences in those new business grant amounts that we bring forward versus those existing businesses and businesses that receive the direct state allocation.
What's our timeframe?
Well, we want to bring it back to the board on March 2nd for final approval. So my recommendation would be that staff bring forward a recommendation at that point with the list of businesses that would be approved and the amount granted to each of those businesses.
You recommend we don't do anything at this time?
There's, there's not a need to. We still have time. If we're sticking with the existing criteria, which I hear consensus for, then we had originally planned that we would be bringing the final approval to the board on March 2nd. That will allow us to get all the applications reviewed and processed by March 15th as outlined in the legislation and get those dollars issued before April 1st.
I like that plan. It's right with everybody else.
That sounds complete.
That works for me.
Clean's right. What a surprise.
Yeah, nice surprise.
Surprise for these businesses that really need the help, so.
Yeah.
Anything else on that item then, Bob? Do we?
Nothing else on that, but I could touch on the financial status report.
Sure. Did Bob and Courtney are still on? I can't tell anymore. Well, if they are, thank you for all your work on this. We appreciate it.
Yes, thank you very much.
Okay, with that, we will move on.
All right, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, item number 11 in your packet is the financial status report. I won't spend a ton of time on it. It's one month out of our fiscal year for 2021. You'll see our total revenues were just under $4 million with expenses at 7.2, almost 7.2 million. So typical first month of the fiscal year with expenditures exceeding revenue kind of across the board. Enterprise fund, a little better there where the total revenues was $344,000 for the month against expenses of $156,000. Cash balances are on the second page and you'll see that, again, our available funds are right in line with our target for our six-month operating funds. And I'd certainly be willing to answer any questions the board might have, but for the sake of time, I'll keep my report a little short this month.
It looks good.
It's always good information. Thank you.
Yes, welcome. Very straightforward. Any questions or comments on the financials? Other than committee assignment reports, I don't see anything else on my agenda. Bob, do you have anything else to add?
I do not have anything else today.
Anybody else got anything for the good of the order before we do our reports? Seeing none, let's start with Kevin today.
Ooh, that's a switch.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Since February 2nd board meeting, I participated with other commissioners in the work session. Department head meetings, attended Soil, Water, Conservation District with, with Commissioner Brunder, as well as the Center for Rural Policy Development Board meeting. Had conversations and met with staff and others concerned the proposed CFS liquid petroleum bulk plant. Had the opportunity with Ryan to tour the Lake Crystal shop, take a look at the Lily Lakes Trail possibilities, as well as the Highway 60 improvements. Coming up, we'll participate in the Lake Crystal City Council meeting tonight regarding the trail. Tomorrow morning, I have new commissioner training and then tomorrow afternoon, have University of Minnesota Extension orientation. That completes my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Cause he, Vance.
All right, well, go back to the second and, let's see, oh, that's all right. Nope, it is. I had a NACO membership meeting after our board meeting. And we had our department head meeting on Wednesday, the 3rd. On the 4th, I had a Towards Zero Death Steering Committee meeting and that was followed by a library board meeting. On the 5th, the AMC board had a joint futures board presentation with, well, Alan Page.
And Neil Kaskari.
And Neil, I would have found it here, but I thought that would be better. Who is the president of the?
Federal Reserve.
Federal Reserve.
Minneapolis.
In reference to a, a school program that they're, they're trying to get passed through the state of Minnesota. It'll probably be a constitutional.
That's, yeah.
Type amendment type, so that'll, that's, that'll be interesting to watch. That'll, that's, that'll be interesting to watch. Monday, the 8th, I had my first detox board meeting.
Oh.
So that was interesting. And that's going to be a monthly meeting until they can get, they, they, they said they can get things straightened out and, and then it will go quarterly, you know. We had our, our board work session on the 9th. I see, I had a library discussion with Josh and a few other people here in the city. And then I had a, the NACO Transportation Committee meeting. Let's see, on the 11th, I attended a youth community group, which is with District 77. In fact, I might be asking to be put on a committee meeting for that. I've been attending these monthly, but that's for another time. And then that evening, I had a 169 Executive Board meeting quarter. Let's see. On the 12th, I had a transportation summit through Transportation Alliance and talked to different legislators in the region on transportation. And that's the end of mine.
Okay, thank you, Vance. Clean?
On the 2nd, I had an election subcommittee with Finance and Intergovernmental Affairs. I spent a lot of time with, and Mike Stahlberger has been there also. The, the, under the Rules Committee, elections are going to be the first Senate file that comes out. It's about an 800-page bill. And so we've been going through that. It's, it's about eight elections officials from across the nation and I'm the only elected official. And so Mike's been really helpful as to, you know, the impact in Minnesota.
So you will read the whole 800 pages?
Of, of course.
And give us.
And understand them too.
I'm sure understand them. It's hard.
So I've, I've been spending a lot of time doing that. We had department heads, Southwest Minnesota Housing Partnership. I'm on a subcommittee on recruitment, trying to get a much more diverse board than we currently have. I think that's important. As Vance said, the Futures Committee met on the 5th. We met with the AMC board, but on the 4th, we had different people speaking to us. One was Braver Angels, you know, how are we going to bridge this divide? How are we going to, you know, there's, things are so polarized. How are we going to move past that? Lot of discussion on public health. So, you know, just trying to figure out how we, how does, how do we as a country move forward and bridge those divides? On the 5th, I also had another Rules Committee meeting, but that was with Senator Klobuchar's staff and staffer from Oregon. They're the leads on the elections bill. So we're going back and forth. On the 8th, we had another subcommittee where we, you know, answered questions as to the impacts of what's going on in this bill. They think that we're exempt from some things if we're already doing that, but we're a little nervous that we might not be. So it, it's a work in progress. They're hoping to mark it up next week. And they expect it to be on the floor in March, which is really quick. Work session on the 9th, Kip and I had Intergov on the 11th, where we talked about vaccinations and another thing, which all of a sudden my brain went dead.
The Business Assistance.
Business Assistance Program. How could I forget that? The city was really interested in what was going on there. And I thought we had some good conversations. On the 12th, I had State Community Health Advisory Committee. A lot of what Phil talked about today, we talked about with the commissioner. Also, we have new leadership there because Harland was the chair and he's, didn't run again. So Sheila Kiskaden's the new chair, Terrell Clark's the vice chair. And each region, there are eight regions, get to put somebody on the executive committee, an alternate and a member. So Bobby from Sibley County is the member representing this region and Deem Alter from Wasika County is the alternate. So lots going on at the Department of Health, trust me. And some people have retired, so there's new people in new positions, which is always, people who've been there 30 years, all of a sudden they're gone. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Clean.
Thank you.
Mark.
Okay, let's see, on the Wednesday, we had the department heads on the 3rd. And then on the February 8th, I did do a virtual with the Greater Minnesota Coalition for the Homeless City and County Leaders and that had quite a few commissioners on there. Like Terrell Clark from Sterns and, yeah, there's several other rural and actually a number of rural. You always think there'll be some urban or suburban, but there was rural. That, you know, they dealt more kind of with what they would look at doing with the legislative session on things with, on the Coalition for the Homeless, different things. They're actually just trying to get, see, get and make sure they're in the funding stream. And on February 9th, we had our county board work session. And then of course, Kip and I on the 10th had our MICA board meeting and that dealt with a lot of just issues that, more reports on the legislature and where things were in the beginning and organizational and all of that. And so that's actually always really interesting. Yeah, we spent a long time. That was a long meeting too.
Yeah.
And on the February 11th, we did have RCF. And things are, I think, coming around a little bit on that, so that looks good. So that concludes my report, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Mark. I think most of stuff that I was at to have been mentioned, the couple of things that haven't been. I had MRCI board meeting and we are trying to get things spooled up again. It looked like a totally different operation, but at the end of the day, we hope to have, it'll be a couple hundred vans running around, three or four people instead of all the buses. So it'll be a lot more personal and then just getting the people out working in the community. And it's working out really well right now. So they're starting to get things going and they're still trying to sell the MRCI building, which we're leasing until June, which was a big help to them. But financially, at the end of the year, they ended up coming out okay after the stuff from the federal government and very appreciative of the grants that they got from all of the counties that participated. It's not just our county they work in, so they were able to take advantage of several of those and very appreciative of that. Everybody's already seen the planning and zoning stuff we had, because that was this morning. Kevin mentioned SWCD. MICA, yeah, RCF, Intergov, that's pretty much everything summed up for me. Couple meetings with people with, dealing with some ditch stuff, but other than that, business as usual for me. So anything else for, before we call adjournment? I got a motion to adjourn. Do I have a?
Second.
Got a first and a second for adjournment. Stephanie, we call a roll.
Commissioner Pat?
Aye.
Commissioner People?
Aye.
Commissioner Landkammer?
Aye.
Commissioner Strumberg?
Aye.
Chair Brunder?
Aye.
Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thank you everybody for your time.
Thanks.
Good meeting. Good meeting.
Thanks. I printed.
Good meeting.
Those are the.